Sorry about that. We're going to call the council meeting for October 17th, 2023 to order at 6:32. Item number one, we have a quorum. Everyone's in present. And item number two, pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Item number three, presentation of audit for fiscal year 2023. We have someone's going to speak about that.
Well, good evening. My name is Stephanie Harris, one of the partners with the CPA firm Belt Harris Bahatchek. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to present the audit for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022. I understand that the BOUND report was part of your packet. Page one is our official report to city council. Very pleased to say that we are issuing a clean, unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. Again, unmodified being the highest level of assurance we can provide that the financial statements are materially correct and that all disclosures required by generally accepted accounting principles were included. And in terms of just some highlights for the 22 fiscal year, page 24 and 25 of the report is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for all of the city's governmental funds. For the 2022 fiscal year, the city saw just over 3.1 million in total revenues, just over 2.9 million in expenditures, which did include principal and interest on long-term debt as well as capital improvements. After some inter-fund transfers and the sale of capital assets, the city saw an overall net increase to fund balance of 322,000 for the year. The bulk of that can be seen within the city's general fund. The general fund had an ending fund balance of approximately 4.5 million. Again, as you look at a government's financial statements, one of the benchmarks would be to see how much ending fund balance is in the general fund in comparison to that year's operating expenses. And you generally want to see a minimum of 25% or 90 days. Now, that varies in terms of just other considerations for risk for the city in the future, most notably here, your geographic location. The city ended the fund balance with a very healthy balance of approximately 180% of your 2022 expenditures. Now, if you looked at that, that's divided into several buckets. The portion that's important is the unassigned, meaning it's available for the next operating year or future years, and that represented approximately 94% of your annual operating expenses. So you had a fantastic year. Just another thing I'd like to point out is that as a result of your conservative investment choices and tax pool, the city did report positive net investment income, which also saw a healthy increase over the prior fiscal year. That concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item, item number four, reports from council. Councilman Ed Waters?
Yes, the mayor and I attended the Texas Municipal League Conference in Dallas a few weeks ago. I sat in on some of the meetings concerning EDC and tax uses. Learned quite a bit there. Got a lot more to learn. I figured I found that out. We also, we had a painting party Saturday. Didn't realize we had so much talent on the island, but we had probably, I don't know, 30 or more volunteers that showed up Saturday. We had expected to have quite a few young ones. We had two 10-year-olds probably, and Alex's little one-year-old, is she one yet? Okay. She painted hers too, so we all had paint all over us. But it turned out real well, so we look forward to being able to hang them up in Triangle Park when the time comes in a few weeks.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Next is Rick Fisher.
As far as Parks and Pool, there was a meeting back on September 11th last Monday. Chris is here. I'm going to let her give you all the skinny details on that. But I do want to make a shout out to our PD. We were out of town this past week, and when we got in one area, we had cell service. We had a basically frantic, almost joking call from my in-laws who just recently moved to the island. They had gone out to, I don't know, it was the store, to a doctor's appointment. They came back home, the front door to the house is wide open. There were two police officers and neighbors sitting in the front yard with their white German shepherd who apparently figured out how to open the front door and got out and decided to do our own little self-tour of the neighborhood. Anyway, they were able to round her up. The PD came over just to make sure that everything was okay, nobody had gotten into the house, and it wasn't a dog that actually opened the door. The amount of confidence that it just instills in them and the choice it made moving here to the island is just, it's one of the reasons that we live here. So David, thank you so much for the officers that you got. Do appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Rick. Jeff Terrell?
Nothing to report at this time.
Alex Scamlet?
Just want to remind all the citizens that the constitutional amendment election voting begins on October 23rd. There's a couple propositions on there, notably Proposition 12 for the elimination of the Galveston County Treasurer's Office. I encourage you to read about that and, you know, get out and vote.
Alex, Amanda Family?
So in addition to that election, there's also a Clear Lake ISD bond election. You can Google Clear Lake ISD bond and read information about that as well. That election also starts, early voting starts on Monday. I can take my councilwoman hat off after this meeting if you have questions and comments. I've attended two presentations on that, one by their political action committee, one by the district. I can tell you that their board of trustees has done their research, did not come to the conclusion to go out and ask for a bond and a tax, potential tax increase lightly. They don't take that lightly, so please, as Alex said, do your research and do your homework before you vote. So early voting starts next Monday. And then, thank you to everybody who came out for National Night Out. I don't think we've had a, have we had a council meeting since then? No, right? So yeah, so that was a lot of fun. And Chief, thanks for all the T-shirts and the sparklers and the glow sticks and all that. That was a lot of fun. So thank, and to the Civic Club. And I think Art cooked hot dogs and chili and all that, so that was a lot of fun. Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you, Amanda. So like Ed was saying, he and I attended the TML. There was a lot of good seminars for us to learn about how to operate the city, how the EDC works, how other cities are in kind of the same shape we are. We're all pretty much related in one way or another, that some of the problems we have other cities have too, big and small. The other thing is Amanda and I also attended an update on the ITD. I'm sure all of you guys know what that is. If you don't, you can talk to us after the meeting about that. They gave a lot of good information. It's still several years down the road. Texas has committed a lot of money to it, but the federal government hasn't figured out how they're going to pay for that yet. So there's a lot of work being done. There's a lot of pre-work being done down in Bolivar and Galveston that needed to be done before that ITD got built anyway, so they are continuing to work on that. The only other thing I had was, don't forget to come out Saturday up at Oakey's. We're going to be deemed a Texas music city. There's going to be, Johnny worked on this. He'll put a lot of time into this. There's going to be live music, a lot of fun. We're going to have someone down from the governor's office to present that to our city. That'll be a fun time. Thank you for that, Johnny. That's all I got. Okay, moving on. Staff reports. Police Chief David Donaldson.
Mayor, council, we had a total of 191 traffic contacts last month. One alarm call, one burglary of a motor vehicle, a couple theft calls, assist other agencies. We had six. Residential checks was 127, business checks was 516, and welfare checks was 26. We were about ready to start using the Tech City Jail, where we'll get a lot busier having a place to go. I'd like to introduce Mr. Monks here. He's going to be sworn in sometime tonight as our city, as our jail attorney, our prosecutor. Anyway, Mr. Monks here. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, sir. City Administrator Bergat?
Just a few updates this evening. Wanted to update everybody on the Oakey's parking lot project that is nearing its completion. We did finally get it striped. We do have to make some adjustments on the parking stops, the way they work right now. If you miss one side, you can be quickly over the curb, which could cause a problem for either the Oakey storage facility or the fence over there. So we're making some adjustments there to make it safe for all. We did get our RFQs back on our engineering request. We will have, we've sent a master services agreement to city attorney today. He'll be looking that over and hopefully bring that back to you for next council meeting, and then we can start letting some of these other projects go. Update on Shell Bottom Boat Ramp, two parts. We recently had posted that it was closed because of some recent high water levels compromised the safety of the pier, and so we had to shut that down. Thank you to Jorge and Odie. They're not here, but if you see them, please appreciate their appreciation. They put in a lot of hours to, and a trip to the ER. But they did make the adjustments back so it is safe prior to that high water. Now, I will qualify, this is not the final construction project for that grant phase is still going. This makes it safe where it can be utilized. So if you've got anybody that's launching out there, the drop-off is still there, kind of using that at your own risk. As far as the construction process, I mentioned that we're ending the planning phase, which last part of that is having a biologist do a endangered species report, which takes about three weeks. That was led to a biologist this last week, so we're looking probably three weeks from now, wrapping up the planning portion of our phase, moving on to the construction phase. The construction phase, I will qualify, is not guaranteed money, but I've been told by Parks and Wildlife that if you receive the planning grant, chances are probably 90% that you're going to get the construction phase. So we're looking, and keep people, keep wanting to ask me, when do we get started on this? I'm staying away from that one. That's a loaded, that's a loaded answer there, so hopefully have some better answers in the future. Another safety closure we had a while back was the fishing pier at Jarboe Park. That has now been totally repaired and back open, and I've seen several people fishing off of it on a daily basis, so we're glad to see that's being utilized again. And then another safety closure, we did have the swimming pool repairs did get done. I'm real pleased with the end product. I will make sure to remind everybody that the last major repair that was done on it, the coping was cut short, which would lead to the mastic coming out. This, the ones that did the repair said because of that issue, it's possible this mastic could come back out. So if you see it, it's not a fault of the contractor. It's until we decide that we're going to invest a substantial more and do the coping the right way that we're going to have to live with. But right now, everything looks good. Everything is back safe, and the tiles are back on, looks good. And Mayor, I think that's all I've got for now.
So one note on the swimming pool. Can we find out if that's part of what we did a year or so ago? Did they cut that coping short when we paid them quite a bit of money to repair that? Maybe they owe us something back.
We can look into it. I'm not even sure who did it. I know it was well before my time, but I can make the inquiries and look into it. Most of that stuff's a one-year warranty, so we'll definitely look into it and explore possibilities.
And so one other question about that boat ramp. You know, we talked, that ramp itself is breaking off more and more. So originally, we had some paper signs out there saying no boats over 30 feet. Can we get some more permanent signs maybe, since we're not sure how long it's going to be, and tell people, please use this at your own risk? And we did talk about putting a marker out there again so they know where the end of that ramp is since it broke apart.
Two-part, yes, definitely. We're on the look at some signage, and we probably need to determine what's a safe boat length, 24-foot trailer, 30-foot trailer, or whatever. Put that signage up, it has no use in excess of that, as well as signage that says use at your own risk. The markings, it used to have a mark where that drop-off was at on the ramp. All that lumber's been replaced, and now that's back in, we'll have to re-mark that. Odie did put up yesterday morning, put up an orange flag, just kind of as a temporary fix. It's already been tore off. So we've got to find something that's a little better, something that's can be seen from a rearview mirror, somebody backing in, but yes, we do need to put the markings, and they definitely need it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Moving on, committee reports. Roads and drainage?
We did go out for a bid for a proposal for a city engineer. As Brad mentioned, we didn't get a whole lot of response, so we may have to redo our criterias. But once that's done, then there will be an assessment of the bridge, and after that's done, then we will continue with our regular work, which is, first of all, Clear Lake Road up to Forest, and then we're going to go on to Narcissus and Ollister Street and get back on schedule. And in the meantime, I'm happy to say that we've improved some of the maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Next is Parks and Pool.
As Rick mentioned, we did meet last Monday. Odie got us into the pool, and so we were able to meet there. It was a really nice evening and great to be outdoors. We got reviews of all the parks. Brad actually caught you update on Shell Bottom. Actually, all the parks are looking pretty good. Mentioned possibly putting in some pansies over its undial, but otherwise, no real updates other on the pool. Regarding Grove, we're still waiting on the children's playground equipment that Brad is still working on funds for, and then the individual exercise equipment at the various parks is tied in with what Brad is working on that. And Brad went over the pool. Of course, we were out there and looked at it. It looked really good. When that pool was totally redone during COVID, the total pool, everything was redone because it was totally drained, the whole sanding of the whole inside. I don't know much about pools, but everything would have been done. So I feel they probably, it was probably that group that did it that didn't really do it properly. There was breaks. They, the crews got COVID, it took a while, but everything should have been done properly, I feel, at that time. We did have a little open discussion with our committee, just reviewing various things, projects that we had been working on, and items that we were looking forward to for next year, since we were able to put input into our budget for the first time in a while. So we just reviewed some of that. But the main reason we wanted our meeting was because of the project we've been working on for quite a while, redoing the birdhouses at Triangle, or Triangle Parks, really, Jeanne Marie Park. And Ed was on our committee at the time and volunteered to be chair, and he was kind enough to continue that when he had to resign and took a position on city council. We tossed it around for quite a while, probably kind of tired of hearing about our bird project, and it didn't get completed. So finally, thanks to Ed, we could have really never done that without him. We were getting input, you know, be too messy to have real birdhouses, et cetera, et cetera. But it was really Ed's vision that he wanted real birdhouses, and he wanted, and we discussed this, we wanted some creativity. We wanted people, kids, to be able to paint the houses however they wanted, and I think that turned out really great. We thanked Brad for working on funds. We took part of them from last year's budget, the rest from this year's budget, and it was a lot of work getting all that together, figuring out. Ed got picked up, I think we had 96 birdhouses. He put together himself 60, then other members of our committee took some home, worked on them. And I think everyone had a really good time. Ed said we'd hope more kids, but everyone seemed to have fun. If you haven't seen it on Facebook, I caught a picture of Alex with his precious little, I think 18-month-old daughter, painting a birdhouse. So if you haven't seen it, look it up on Facebook. We really appreciate, well, we appreciate everybody coming, and we thank, I want to really thank our committee for all the work they did. Saturday, we had about everybody, except Diana Cross and Hallie Brown was out of town, so they couldn't be there for Saturday's painting. And I believe it's Jorge and maybe Odie that's going to put the hooks in the boxes, and then they'll work on getting them hooked. So I took a couple home because I didn't have, I'm not really that creative, but I took a few home. I didn't have time to work on them. We had several people take them home, so not all of them got finished. So we want to thank, like I said, everyone for coming. I don't think there was anyone here that did, and Ed especially, and Rick came to our meeting, and we always appreciate him coming in and giving his input. Thanks.
Mayor, if I could, real quick, add on to the playground discussion. The bid from the contractor that we had coming in, came in about $30,000 over what we had budgeted. Thanks to some of our attendees at the TML conference, I've gotten a lot of good resources and contacts came back to me, so we're going to reach out to some other vendors and get some, see how far, if they were off of the marker, or just got to realize we've got to make some adjustments. So hopefully, within the next month or two, I'll be able to come back with some other numbers for you.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Chris. Moving along, waterfront compliance?
The only thing is, talking to Doug, we had the issue with those three, or those two lots over, slips on West Shore. He said the only solution that he can see right now is they may have to resurvey them to get an accurate solution to the problem. So kind of at a standstill right now.
Okay, it's probably time for us to talk to those two waterfront leaseholders and possibly Brad, and see how that's going to come about.
I've got an update from Planning and Zoning and ZBOA when you're ready.
Okay. Thanks, Ed. Planning and zoning?
So we were contacted by Mr. Machowski, and he did advise the Planning and Zoning and zoning board of adjustments have not met since our last council meeting and had nothing to report at this time.
All right. What about ZBOA?
Ditto.
I'll put that in my notes, by the way. Okay. Moving ahead, Civic Club report. Anybody here from the Civic Club? Okay, moving along, economic development?
I'd like to echo what Randy said about the certification of Clear Lake Shores with the Texas Music Office. That's something that's been in the works for a while, and they just released the press release today, the Office of the Governor and the Texas Music Office certifying us as the 49th city in Texas. So that's pretty cool, feather in our cap, and there will be a celebration at Oakey's on Saturday. This last-
Johnny, can I, and by release the press release, what Johnny means is that the governor's office blasted it all over social media, and any of the governor's social media pages that you go to, it literally says, "Congratulations, city of Clear Lake Shores," which I think is really kind of cool. Our little tiny city that a lot of people probably don't even know about, the governor, I mean, he has it all over his social media, so I don't know. The PR nerd in me just thought that was really cool, so-
And thanks for explaining that because I knew you would know a lot more about than me.
That is kudos to you, my friend. So good job.
Thank you. And we probably will see some cities around here follow suit if I had to guess. I've already been contacted by a few of them. This last Tuesday was our regular EDC meeting. We had a fairly short agenda, but we did have three terms ending, seats on the board ending, and we had five applicants. Two of them were not eligible based off of our criteria for EDC. So we did a little digging into that, and we actually asked Mr. Gregg, he wrote a nice opinion letter, and thanks again, that was very detailed, and it kind of gave our situation compared to the Texas code versus our ordinances and our bylaws for the EDC. So we kind of figured out how we stand compared to other cities, and we talked about that at our next agenda item and decided to open up a couple of seats to non-residents to be more in line with the state of Texas code. So I think that's something we are going to discuss maybe next time, but. So that being said, we had three eligible applicants and three seats, so we recommended the three eligible applicants, which are Ronnie Richards, Mark Atherton, and Mr. John Hillbrand, who's here. I am saying Hillbrand, right. Okay. Sure. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Johnny. Moving on to number nine, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the council. If the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda, the comments may be made at the, now or at the time the agenda item is discussed. If the topic is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to the maximum of three minutes per individual. So before we start that, I want y'all to notice we have a clock. And in the last meeting, and a few meetings, even before my time as mayor, a lot of people overrun, and they keep pushing forward. We need to hold that to three minutes to respect others, please. I don't, I don't want to be up here doing this, going, "Stop, stop, stop." We're all adults. I shouldn't have to do that. So please be respectful of the three minutes. If you're finishing up a sentence, I'm fine with that. But when you turn a page and start a whole nother page, that's not really, you know, being respectful of others. So you guys can see this, please monitor that. I'd hate to ask someone to tell you you need to stop. Please be respectful of other people. Thank you. Anybody who'd like to address city council?
My name's Darlene Pettit, and I live at 18 Cedar Road. I wanted to address the situation. I was actually a little taken off guard. I'm on Pool and Parks Committee, which, that's a whole nother subject, but I have asked every meeting about the pickleball court, and I didn't appreciate that a friend of mine actually spoke up at the meeting who lives on the island, and then was cornered after the meeting, asking who put her up to it. So I'm going to bring it up every time, and I'm going to do whatever I have to do until we have a city-town hall meeting and a vote concerning it because of where I live and the noise that it affects on birch and cedar. So I just want to let you know that I was not happy that that happened. She also was someone who dealt with a lot of the pickleball lawsuits when she lived in Colorado, so she's very well-versed in it, but I was just offended at that. Then on to pools and parks. I'm new to the committee. We had four seats coming up, and there's a lot of people that are running, that are definitely pickleball people, so that was interesting to me. But also, what's interesting is that you have four people, and that's more than half the committee, and that's too many people that should be being re-elected or moved around with only two of us, and two of us are brand-new. So that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Jimmy Hardcastle. I live at Five-Two-Nine East Shore Drive. And I just wanted to say the past couple days, I've noticed the CLS police cars all over the island and I love it. It's really helping people slow down and the kids is what I care about the most. And seeing these cars that, "Don't move here on the island, see all the cars, police cars around islands, slow down and make stops." That's a really smart idea. So, that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you, I've gotten calls, I feel like you're sleeping in the cars.
Since it's Halloween, maybe we should put some skeletons in it.
Thank you, Jimmy. Anyone else? No one else, we'll move on to the next item, the consent agenda. Anybody wanting anything pulled from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D.
I got a motion by Rick.
I'll second that.
Got a second by Ed. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, consent agenda passes. Moving on to item number eleven, new business discussion, possible action may be taken on the following items. Appointment of members to zoning board of adjustments, three positions. You guys have that in your packet, we'll need a motion to root for.
All motion to appoint Patrick Machowski, Phil Head, and Elaine Sokoloff to the zoning board of adjustments.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Alex, got a second by Amanda. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving to the next one, item number B, or item, letter B. Appointment of member to planning and zoning, there's two positions and one alternate.
I'll move to appoint Bob Roth. And the only reason we're appointing one is because there's only one who applied. So then I will also ask that we re, uh, post? Or is it currently posted? I haven't looked on the web.
No, we pulled him down, but we did have a, Amy's been waiting and waiting and waiting to get the committee field because she has an item that needs to be addressed.
So in addition to, if we appoint Bob, we still need one more? Who's our P and Z liaison? Lordy, Lordy, y'all. Then I will amend my motion to appoint Bob Roth and Alex Skidlin to the planning and zoning commission. Committee, committee or commission? Mm-hmm, to P and Z.
And there's still an alternate, if anybody's interested.
You got a motion by Amanda, need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, you got a second by Jeff. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
And if anybody wants that position, just ask me and I'll resign, it's fine. I don't mind doing it, but, you know, I'm not, not super attached.
Well, thanks for stepping up and filling in. Item C, appointment of members to Rosen Drainage, two positions.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Thomas Holland and Mike, I'm not even gonna try to pronounce your last name, I apologize for that, to the Rosen Drainage Committee.
You got a motion by Rick, we got a second?
I'll second.
You got a second by Ed. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Next item, item D, appointment of members to Parks and Pool Committee, there's four positions.
Mr. Gregg, do we have to make a motion to approve or can we motion to discuss first? Just to discuss? So if I make a motion to discuss, do I have to name, or just say, just make a mo, okay. So, yeah, so I'm just gonna make a motion to discuss Parks and Pool applicants.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Amanda, got a second by Rick. All in favor for discussion?
Discuss. Because I feel like, because I feel like this is probably the one that, well, this is the one that has more than the op, the number of open seats. More applicants than the number of open seats. So...
Does anyone know if all of, if any of these, or if all of these people have been attending meetings? Can Chris, can you answer that?
Rick's liaison, I mean, I hate to put you on the spot, Rick, but...
Have, have all seven of these applicants been?
The, the four seats that are expiring, yes, they've, they've, they've all been at the meetings. As far as the other three that are applying, they, they have not ma, they have not been coming to the meetings, but apparently when the positions came open, they were, they were expressing an interest.
So I'll really add one thing for council. I, I do, I don't know if any of the other ones ever applied. I do know for a fact that Beth Atherton applied several times, you know, two, three times. And like Jesse, when he applied for EDC, didn't get it. And so she's reapplying. Just so you know, she was interested a year or two ago and is interested again, since there's some spots of...
So... We also don't have to appoint all four if we don't want to, correct? Or do we have to appoint all four? But we'd need to make sure that the committee has a quorum, correct? So it'd be in our best interest to appoint all four? Okay. Okay.
But as a committee like that, are they actually required to have a quorum? Because they're a committee, not a board? Just curious.
Does one of the three new applicants want my seat on planning and zoning? They can have it.
Well, I do like the idea of having, I'm going to say, a mixture on the Parks and Pool Committee. You know, I think it's important to have some people that have been there, have a little bit of experience, but I also like the idea of having some people that are new, you know, first off, because they are stepping up to volunteer. And with so many things in the city going on right now, there's just, you know, just look at the FOA, three open seats and only one applicant. And again, thank you, Alex, for stepping up for that. So the fact that we actually have, you know, more stepping up into here, just to your point, four people that were already on it and totally ignore the others, you know, it, I don't necessarily think that's a, you know, a good idea, but I do like the idea of having, you know, some experience on there too. My opinion.
Is there anybody that's on this committee that, Rick, that's been on it for one term and getting back on? Or someone that took over someone's term? Somebody had to take over Mark Thompson's term when he...
Yeah, that was Mary, wasn't it?
Yeah, she, I was gonna say, Mary is the newest, I believe.
Well, I just wonder if some of these term expirations are wonky, but we can deal with that later. Right. Right. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah. 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 Yeah, for sure. There's two, well, there's three. So the list on the website's not accurate. Yeah. Yeah, because, yeah, because, um, it's... Do you need a motion, Mayor? Is that, well, I made a motion to discuss. If we're done discussing, is that, what's next?
Somebody has someone they wanna appoint, yes.
So I will make a motion to appoint Beth Atherton, Laura Broussard, Mary Cooney, and Shannon McGinnity to the Parks and Pool Committee.
I'll second it.
You got a motion by Amanda, got a second by Rick. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, moving on to item E, appointment of waterfront compliance committee, there are three positions open there.
I, I recommend that we accept the applications of Brad, and I can't pronounce his last name, Charlie Hammaker and Brian Wallner to the waterfront compliance committee.
I'll second.
You got a motion by, you got a second by Alex. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Moving on to item F, appoint, approval appointment of members to the EDC committee, or corporation. There's three positions.
So I'll move to appoint Mark Atherton, John Hildebrand, and Ronnie Richards to EDC.
I'll second that.
You got a motion by Amanda, got a second by Jeff. Any discussion on those? All in favor? Motion passes. Anybody opposed? Okay, that was on the last two, by the way. You didn't raise your hand last time either. Okay, moving on to item G, approved installation agreement for the city hall parking canopy cover. There is one adjustment on here, there was a typo, this is actually thirty thousand two hundred and fifty, not thirty-two thousand. So everybody make a note of that. Thirty thousand two hundred and fifty. Brad, you're up.
Uh, yes, this is for covered parking on the backside of city hall. Again, reiterated, it's thirty thousand two fifty. This is coming out of our ARPA funds. It's, uh, props, I believe it's ninety feet by eighteen feet deep on the backside and covers the entryway to the back of the building.
And this is for a couple of reasons, right? So when it, when it pours rain back there, we've got either police officers walking out in the rain, going to and from their car, or we have staff doing that. And recently, there was a really hard rain and there was six inches of water back there.
As well as adding UV protection for our patrol units.
Coverage for whatever vehicle parks back there, whether it's staff, but mainly PD cars. You know, just keep them out of the sun, keep them from dry rotting the dashboards and things of that nature. So it's a multi-purpose thing.
Question on that, this one, is this the ASA builders that we're talking about?
Yes, sir, that is the recommended one.
Okay, you said eighty, or ninety feet by fourteen?
I was going by memory, what's the quote actually say?
Eighty-six by twenty, twenty-two.
Eighty-six by twenty-two. And I, we actually do have the bidder here if we got any specific questions.
Now, the question I had was, the width of the back of the house, uh, building there is ninety-three feet. I just wondered why we didn't go ahead and cover that extra seven feet, you know, like in the back area, it could be for a picnic table or whatever, or, since you're already looking at...
The focus was for the, the vehicles and the entryway, so we stopped at that point, there wasn't even consideration for it.
I mean, the, the minimum cost for labor and materials at that point, because you've already paid for planning and...
I'm sure they'd be glad to add it on if that's recommended to the desire of the council.
I would, I would recommend...
It ha, it hasn't historically been utilized, but that's not to say that it...
Brad, is this cover attached to the existing building?
The only attachment is the stairways walking into the building, so you got, when you walk out of the building, you're covered. It's offset by, what, about three foot, I believe, from the building, basically from the edge of the grass out forward.
Okay, and then, I don't know how it works with our TML insurance, but, you know, I, I wanna make sure that this contract covers WPI eight certification, because most of them say, "Will if required," and our city doesn't require a WPI eight certification, but for state-backed...
That was one of the deciding, selection criteria for this one. It does come with engineered plans and we get to win certification with it as well. That was an absolute for this project.
This is, you said this is the ASA one? It just says engineered drawings, and I've been through this too many times, where it, it needs to say WPI eight certification in that contract.
We'll get with that.
So the, the contract will, I would, for, for me to approve this or to vote yes on this, it's gonna have to be updated to include WPI eight certification for the structure?
And it will be, on the, the, they'll be engineered to withstand...
Right, but the contract needs to state WPI eight certification in it, not, not just engineered drawings. Just, just contract language, but that's very important.
I'll tell you what, then I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the installation of the city hall parking canopy for the sum of thirty thousand two fifty, with the addition of the WPI D... canopy for the sum of thirty thousand two fifty with the addition of the WPI D...
WPI eight.
Yep. Certification on the contract.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion by Rick. Got a second by Alex. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay. Unanimous at that time. All right. Moving on. Approved contract for sidewalk for item eight, approved contract for... Approved contract for sidewalk and excavation work to be done at Oakies. This is the item that we discussed at the Plaza Ten meeting.
I'll move to approve the sidewalk between however it's forwarded. I don't have the ordinance in front of me for Oakies and, yeah, for ten thousand one oh seven.
Okay. I'll second it.
Got a motion by Amanda. Got a second by Jeff. Any discussion on this? Okay. All in favor? Motion passed unanimous. Consider and approve Gerald Patrick Monk as the new associate judge for the city of Clear Lake Shores.
Mayor, council, I'd like to mention that one or two meetings ago, we approved, or council approved the associate judge. At that time, we ran into some logistical challenges, not able to make that relationship work. We have met with Mr. Monk, and he's able to meet our requirements to take over the magistrate duties for the jail, and we're asking that you approve him this evening. And just for full clarity, this is the same rates as what the last one was.
I'll make a motion, then, that we approve Gerald Patrick Monk as the new associate judge for the city of Clear Lake Shores.
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion by Rick. Got a second by Ed. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Motion passed unanimous.
Okay. I, Gerald Patrick Monk. I solemnly swear. No, I don't have a directed or indirect payment. Offered. Offered. Promised to pay. Promised to pay. Contributed. Contributed. Or promised to contribute. I've promised to contribute. Any money or thing. Any money or thing. Of value. Of value. Or promised in a public office. I've promised in a public office. Or employment. Or employment. For the giving. For the giving. And the holding. And the holding of my appointment. Of my appointment. Or as a reward. Or as a reward. To secure my appointment. To secure my appointment. Or confirmation. Or confirmation. Whichever the case may be. Whichever the case may be. So, don't we, uh... So, help me, uh... I state your name. I, Gerald Patrick Monk. You solemnly swear or affirm? I solemnly swear or affirm. That I will faithfully execute... No, I will faithfully execute... The duties. The duties of the Clear Lake Shores municipal board. Of the Clear Lake Shores municipal board. Associate judge. Associate judge. Within the state of Texas. Within the state of Texas. And will to the best of my ability. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. Reserve, protect, and defend. The constitutions. The constitution. And laws. And laws. Of the United States of America. Of the United States of America. And of this state. And of this state. So, help me, God. So, help me, uh...
All right. Thank you too, Judge, for stepping up. And that'll adjourn our meeting at seven twenty-eight.